Hello, everyone. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, March 4th, 2024 Meeting of the Town Planning Board. Let's confirm the presence of my planning board members. I don't have any changes to the hosting meeting agenda. Anyone else? You received the meeting notes from Jim. Anyone have any comments or questions? I will do so. Thank you, Edna Mayhew, second. Thank you, Greg. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post extension motion carries. We have before you the draft minutes from our meeting on the 20th. Gretchen has not yet concluded the minutes from the February 5th special meeting. So they will be presented at the next meeting by prescription. Any corrections, additions to the February 20th here? My motion?
I will.
Thank you, Sharon, second. Thank you, Edna, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post extension motion carries. I have no correspondence or announcements. Is there anyone else? The first order of business this evening is a new application. Thomas Daniels, 8 Slate Dock Road, site plan and special use permit for roof mounted solar. Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you like to step up the microphone and introduce yourself? Tell us what you'd love to do.
Good evening. My name is Mike Gill. I'm the engineer for the homeowner and contractor. We are proposing a roof mounted solar system on the residence of 8 Slate Dock Road. It's an 11.76 KW system. It's composed of two arrays, one facing south that has 16 panels and then one array facing east that has 12. It's a new construction, has a standing C roof, so the panels will actually align very nice with the vertical configuration. So we're here to present to see if the board has any concerns, questions, comments.
Jim?
Just a couple. The first one is I just wanted to note that the application had stated that it was not located in the local waterfront visualization area of the National Historic District or within 500 feet of the state or county highway or 100 feet of the wetland. I just wanted to note that we are actually in the local waterfront visualization area. It is in the Hudson River National Historic Landmark District and within 500 feet of the state highway of Langcliffe Road. It's also notably within the New York State City areas statewide segments, which is a statewide sort of designation. So that was a technical thing from the application. Just wanted to put that out there. Really, just a couple of comments. You know, it is a roof mounted installation. It is below the peak of the roof. It's required to be based on the sketches that are provided. It will be visible to neighbors. And if you remember when this application came in for the original house, there's a lot of discussion about visibility, height of the structure and things like that. So just wanted to point that out. It'll also be visible to travelers heading north and actually to south on Langcliffe Road as you go by some of the gaps in the tree line of the road. And then I believe it was in the pre-count, there was some discussion about the potential of trimming the trees and removal of trees. Again, based on the discussion we had when the house originally came in, there was a lot of discussion about retaining those trees and not removing those. So I think that should be something specific that we look into and discuss. If you don't want any trees or trimming done, we should make sure that's specifically in the resolution. All okay?
Is there any tree cutting in the case?
I did roof mounted solar. I believe there is not any from what I'm aware of. And just going back to what you mentioned, I didn't prepare the application, but I'll make sure that those things are updated.
And any response to Edna's question? Would you please also confirm if there is or is not any removal?
There is not any removal.
Portrayment?
Portray.
I don't have any problem with looking at solar roof mounted solar. Personally, I think it's beautiful. I mean, do you all have a problem? Do you think it's a problem that this might be visible to neighbors or from a...
It's also a dark roof, right? It's a dark standing C roof.
Which I come to a lot of these boards, it is much different versus on like a shingle roof, a regular roof. This, the standing seems actually much, much better, at least instead of the...
And again, the reason we're doing it is we're in the RCO, so the RCO requires the roof mounted solar review, otherwise we may not be also required to tell. Depends on where you are, the specific situation. This one is because of the RCO.
This is also on the site of a earlier house that was completely torn down for this project that was filed a little more than a year ago. And I can see from the date on the plans, 8/30 of 2023. So why wasn't this part of the filing for the reconstruction of this house?
Of course, I can't speak to that. I'm the engineer who did the solar plant. I don't know what the coordination was when they, you know, built the house or negotiated.
I think at the time, there were a lot of assurances given to us that this, this house and the addition and the garage, they were not going to be visible, they were going to be screened by trees. And if you drive by there, it is quite obvious and it is quite prominent. So I just, you know, I feel like this is...
The roof is just the house, just on...
The house, and I'm, I'm taking it at face value that the roof installation might not be what we expect.
Just some clarifications to be pointing out. It would be interesting to know what the landscape time was, but now we're obviously into the landscape season yet. If, you know, I mean, regarding my personal objective, I think that, of course, we want as much upfront as possible, and I think it's worth looking back at the filings that we're suggesting, but I still think moving in the direction of solar is very important. And I think the impact is mostly the house and not the roof that we're now going to see, and I consider that in this decision.
Well, we're only accepting.
Exactly, it's true.
Let us, we don't need to get ahead of ourselves here. I don't know, neighbors obviously will be noticed after this evening, and they will have an opportunity to come in and comment as they did in the past, and then we'll process in the way that neighbors' concerns or lack thereof as we move ahead with the application.
Another thing I'd like to know, was there any analysis done about the amount of glare of reflection that might come off of these panels onto River Road there?
No, but I'm sure we're obviously having to come back for a public hearing at the next meeting to get some of that information.
Because the site of the house is actually below the roof of the road, and it's a south-facing panel, south and then east-facing panel. So would there be conditions under which the sun might glint off of the panels?
The foundation level might be lower than the road, like I think at the second floor roof, but I could take a look at it.
Were there any more members? Questions? Jim, I think you have a draft.
I have a draft procedure resolution for the board's consideration tonight. Recycle plan and special use permit by Donna Daniels for roof up solar installation at 8 Slate Dock Road in the RM1 and the RCO overlay. Accept the application's required documents as per the review. Classifying actions unlisted for which according to environmental quality review is not required. We schedule a public hearing for April 1st at 6:05. We will send this to the CAD for review. We will send it to the local advisory committee for review. APAC because we're in the RCO, whilst such as county because of the site plan, and we need to plan it, board members to...
Edna, Edna would like to go with Edna.
Welcome.
And Sharon. May I have a motion to accept the draft procedure resolution?
So moved.
Sean, second.
Second.
Please, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post extensions. Edna and Sharon will be the ones to do the scheduling sites.
Very good, thank you.
Where the person they should be contacting?
I believe the solar company is the point of contact, but they'll be...
Okay.
They're, they're the ones on the application. Have I resolved the things on the application you mentioned?
I mean, if you just want to submit up the application correction.
Okay. Very good, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. Nice to be first up. Next on the agenda this evening is Darren Prince and Kelly Swiss, Acre Hook Road, site plan review for the... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead. First up this evening in public hearings, Stephen and Patty Labatsky, 191 on Lake School House Road, minor subdivision. Yes. Update us, please. Did you bring happy news?
Steve and Patty, what's that?
Did you bring happy news?
Um, what do we eat? We had the survey fixed, right, together, squiggly line here. Saying our certified letters got one. What else do we need?
Do we have what we needed left?
I visited the spot. And two guys from Young Club here, they also sent a letter.
Okay, well, let's start with Jim, comments?
No, I think we're in shape. The squiggly line is the important squiggly line. That takes care of it. I did just double check because the one issue we had was making sure that the property would not be landlocked, wherein, so I pulled parcel access. This is the parcel we're talking about, and the subdivision is back in here. So this parcel will not become part of this one, which does have access a few months ago. So we're not creating a landlocked parcel. But it's a lot of change.
Site visit?
We have Sharon.
Okay. Ladies?
It was really easy site visit.
Was it?
Yeah. We went up past the Christmas tree farm. There's the line that was contained.
That's it? Delice?
Yeah, it was pretty, it was pretty low impact. Also, just based on the topography of the woods, it really still creates a buffer between the Christmas tree farm and the gun club. And so it felt like a very natural transition that already kind of exists in the way that the landscape already is. And yeah, I would say.
Do you have reports from the other CAD or anybody else? I have nothing. Questions, comments from other members of the planning board?
I think the biggest one is that.
Okay. In that case, I will ask the public, is there anyone here wishing to come in on this application? Darren, do you have a motion to oppose the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post extension motion carries. Jim, do you have a draft approval resolution?
I do have the draft approval resolution for the board's consideration tonight. We're speaking with Patricia Labatsky for minor subdivision, landline adjustment in the Conco Chapter 101 in the RCO 5 zoning district. Reaffirming the prior classification is unlisted and her secret for which according to the environmental quality review is not required. Based upon review of submitted information, including reports of planning board members on the site visit, finding proposed work is consistent with the objective stated in Chapter 101. With respect to the minor subdivision, finding the action is consistent with Conco Chapter 101 subdivision of land, approving the application, inclusive of the subdivision plan prepared by deck surveying, leading November 21st, 2023, and authorizing the planning board to share a stamp and sign as subject to the full conditions as per...
May I have a motion to approve the resolution? So, second, the motion by Sharon, second by please, up for him, Greg?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Please, and I will go. Good luck to all of you. Thanks. Join us after. The second public hearing for this evening is Darren Prince and Kelly Swiss, Acre Hook Road, site plan review for the construction of a single-family dwelling covered terrace and playground through wood fence.
I'm Zach Paul, representing the City of New York, architecture project manager for this school project. Would you like me to start?
I would like you to start reviewing the application before us, then go into comments from the site visit, public comments. Why don't you start with the revision, my memory?
So we have a single family residence, a road driveway on Acre Hook Road, and we have our SBS shown, pool, patio, driveway turn on, and then, of course, the little red, red teeter thing is what is the house. The last meetings were asked to prepare a park, like old store, we did, and it came back with findings, and we have located the trees that were removed in the area of disturbance. And so those were located and on site with Sharon and Greg and the other gentleman, I can't remember his name, Driller, George, I think he visited the site, and they were able to see the, the kind of general area of disturbance, a flat five grade bulk, and we also have an email that came in from Wyatt, and he, and he affirmed that the location of the driveway was possible if we had made some adjustments to the sight lines so that we can achieve the 44 inches high, 12 feet off of the road. It's like two inches and maybe a half feet off of the center of the driveway. So we confirmed that it's possible. We think those changes, we think those changes to the, to the bank, finding, I don't...
So those changes haven't been made yet?
They aren't reflected on the plan.
Okay.
But 100% willing to do them, and we had a really nice conversation on site and, and yes, so it absolutely added to our special. It's kind of the general overview of where we are.
Okay. So let's start with you, Jim, I'd like to see a number of bold things here.
Yep, so as the board remembers, since before, we're going to have to make some changes and adjustments based on the previous discussions. I'm just going to run through, let's kind of make a statement of where we stand now. So as I mentioned, the Phase 1A and 1B has been done and submitted, is requested. Planning board should send that off to APAC for review. Comment, more details, site plan has been provided. We have noted, it has been noted that distances from the structures that exist in the wetland area all exceed 100 feet. But the wetland does need to be professionally delineated, and I didn't see anything noted that that is done professionally delineated. Was that, or was it done off of mapping or some other way?
It, it wasn't done with, I, I don't know how the original survey determined the wet area, which is on our drawing, and we would be more than happy to get those delineated. I, I ask, is, is there any kind of mechanism which that could be an additional approval that we're outside?
I don't think so.
Then I only, then I only say that I, that I wish that last meeting, that, that could have been, you know, requested, that's it.
I did. Okay, my last comment was, it appears the house may be within 100 foot of the wetland, and thus, wetland delineation is likely required, especially within the buffer may be required. So I did mention it last time.
In your comments?
Yes.
Since last time.
No, no, those were his comments.
They were the original comments when we discussed this back in January.
Okay. Those were the comments at that time.
And so it needs to be fleshed in the line. So if, if the survey was done and delineated professionally in the last year, you're okay. I mean, delineation has to be in the last three or four days, but it does have to be done professionally.
Okay.
You've noted, you contacted the highway department. I think you would like to make sure we see that response in writing.
We, we did talk about a lot of things that last time, right? We talked about the tree diameter. I know, because I asked a lot of questions that were probably conceived as root, I'm sorry. But, okay, great, let's go.
I'm just, I'm just going, I'm going through where we were and kind of where we stand.
All right.
So you don't need to reach out to the highway department, that's great, we'd just like to see that in writing.
Yep, he emailed, he emailed the board today.
Did we get that right?
I did, for it, yes.
Okay, so we have that, that's fine.
It's better in the afternoon.
You have one, you do contact the county health department. Can you give us an update on where health department is standing?
Our current health department approval is up in April. So if we have another meeting or so of this, I'm going to have to re-update that, like, approval. Again, not a big deal, just another step, but yes, I have current health department approval, and it's about to run out, and I just have to find the extension, which is just a red tape kind of thing.
I can't find the sheet, but I know it's in here, but you did identify the trees are proposed to be removed, and I guess based on the CAD report that came back, that there were some discussions about not removing a couple of the larger ones possibly, proximity to the drivers, something like that. I identified that. Also, as a question, some larger three four foot trees, it seemed like they were several feet from the driveway, they really did need to come down, obviously, depending on the condition. So I just want to touch on that one quickly as well, and run the standard of discussion with the site visit.
The, the site visit seemed that, seemed quite reasonable, the, the amount of trees that we were removing. There was...
Continue. Okay. Because I have more to say on this topic. After having seen your plans and have, and gone to the site and have reviewed the materials, that's kind of what this is all about.
Totally agree. So let me put it this way, you're willing to remove as few trees as possible in order to achieve the driveway complication, building a house less than that. That said, like, I, I thought I was, I was asked to locate within the boundaries of disturbance the trees that would be removed that were larger than six inches, and not that there was a certain number or type or, you know, like species that couldn't be removed. So I, 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 we, we did find Sharon noted two trees that kind of field posted a very, like, miping and clear place where the driveway would go. So on site, removed two of those flags, those are little flags, it's a pole to get through these two trees that were roughly 20 feet apart. So maybe 25, so, you know, the, the, that's, that's what happened on site. And so the amount of trees that we have proposed minus two is what worked for this.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking for minimal tree removal circumvent. So real quickly, the area of bulk numbers had been put on the plans, is requested, the details about the fence being, needing to be compliant with New York State Code has been added on there, so no problem there. The block dimension information is going to include it. The driveway, I know there's, there's some comments in CAD letter about this. It is still proposed to access Acre Hook Road instead of the adjacent cul-de-sac against the property, and CAD has some comments about that, and if you have thoughts on driveway location. So it was in slope, like...
Yeah, driveway, driveway location. So the last meeting, we had a small, like, disagreement on what that slope was. We've gone back, we've looked at it. I, there was a shift in our drawings, so you're right on, but that shift has now been corrected. If you're on site, which those were, there's a very clear maximum 14% grade path up to, as we calculated, up to that. So you were definitely on point. That was a ground to there, so that we adjusted that, we stood on our own, but it is plus or minus 14% grade, and...
That's, that's why it was, it didn't quite look right.
Yeah.
The pole location for electric poles removed, it was on the adjacent neighborhood property, we're not proposing that go out toward Acre Hook Road, is that correct?
That's, that's correct. We made the decision to avoid the extra pole and that we would just trench the electric pole up the driveway from the existing pole off of Acre Hook. Yeah.
So two more comments. The first one is just, oh, lighting has to be dark sky compliant. The Scotts BXT that you had in the plans did not appear to be dark sky compliant, and it did look like it was going to be on the side of the building or the house versus, say, undercover. This one. It had to have, would have to have something on the top to cap that light, so it would be dark sky compliant.
I don't think there's any way of arguing that.
If it was, you know, if it was under the roof line, then we can talk about it.
All right, all right, but yeah, absolutely, we'll make that's one.
The other ones look okay. I just want to raise for the board's note that they are proposing some kind of ballard lighting along the path and along the driveway as well, so maybe something you want to discuss. And then my only other comment is just whether or not the board wants to have CPL take with it from an engineering perspective, just given the grades of the driveway and a couple of other things depending on how the discussion goes.
Yeah, not an engineer, it's called out some of these elements, it's potential options and issues, but... That's my...
For my evidence, who would see him?
Clark Patterson, the town planning board's engineer.
So those who gave a site visit, should have commented this time?
Yeah, I'll go first. And the CAD was there, and he has the liaison and also George Baker, a member of the CAD. And he forwarded his notes, I don't know if everyone's had a chance to review, but the gist of it was that there, there did seem, seem to be some discrepancy between the marshy area, which is designated as a wetland, and where the house site is intended, it seemed to be less than the 100 foot setback. So clearing up that dispute, I think, would be very important. There did also seem to be an excessive number of mature trees that were going to be taken, largely as a, seeming as an arbitrary function of putting in the driveway and citing the house and citing the septic system. Also, the proposed path for the driveway seems like it is a much harder to accomplish route than going around through the side of the lot, which seems to favor the grade a little bit more. There was also a bit of a flourish by George because we, we got chased by a drone and we got nasty notes on our car for having parked on the common driveway.
It's first time for me.
So, yeah, it was first time for me, it's first time for everything. So if, I, I apologize if I've left any, anything out, but there is some overlap between what George had observed and what I, what my takeaway from the site meeting was. And it feels like, rather than take advantage of the natural features, this design really tends to fight against them, the path for the driveway. I did mention to you that the sighting for the house seemed like a very favorable site. It is, it's a relatively flat area that's, that's very open.
It feels good.
And it just, yeah, it does, it does feel like, it does feel very good. The problem being, all the things that are required for a domicile don't seem to favor that. Getting a car in and out of the site and getting rid of the sewage and some sort of a suitable septic disposal system are all things that you're going to have to put civil engineering in and start a put chainsaw and cut down a bunch of trees. Now, I was happy to see on your plan that you've marked the location and the caliper of all of the trees that are proposed for...
For some coves?
Yes. And the, the very last one, I think, is the one that we noticed on our way out because it's very close to the road, and it's a very big oak tree, I think it's a 32 inch diameter oak tree. So, and it would, it would really be a shame to have to lose that tree if there were another way of getting into the site that might not require as much clearing. And it's, one of the, one of the appealing things about this site is that it is wooden, and it's, it has that, that feeling of being in the woods and isolation, and you're really going to diminish that by clearing everything out and plopping a house down in the middle of it. So again, this, this is my read on it, and I, I felt like some things weren't fully explored as far as alternatives to that amount of clearing. Now, I did go back and look, and you're really only losing 12 of those trees, and I think half of them are, are small, relatively small diameter pines and spruce trees. small diameter pines and spruce trees to the construction of the house and pool. But I think it's not that many that need to be caught for the actual house site. And not that, and, and not that many have to go for the septic disposal system as, as it's planned out. Um, I think it's about ten there, it's about twelve for the house and, uh, maybe about ten for the parking area next to the garage. And then the balance of all of that clearing takes place between the house and the road. And it's going to be, uh, I think, a, a very, uh, very prominent and, uh, obvious feature on a very quiet and remote road to have this big scar pushed down the landscape with Rod Ballard's lineage. Um, I, I think it's not really the most respectable way to treat our rural surroundings.
If I may, can I respond to that?
I think I'd rather here, um, complete the site visit report and then we can respond to all of it at the same time.
Thank you.
Sharon?
One of my first questions was, is siding with the driveway? Um, because the map shows a, um, the Barrett Tyler Road and turnaround, that doesn't exist, which is...
It's true. We noticed when the, when the, the gravel stopped, right? So like the end of the development, the white names may stop around.
So, my first question is, who, when this development was established, the subdivision, once the cul-de-sac turned around, part of the subdivision's approval, and should that have already been established?
The answer is, is yes. Um, the argument that I presented last time, uh, to remind the board is that, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to interpret the whole stuff like that.
We'll let you know.
Okay. Um, so, so when you, when you come through here, the argument here is that this is a, is a marshy area, uh, actually in between two hills. So, the hill that we walked down and then back up is to me like, yes. Uh, is it, is it technically like less disturbance?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Uh, however, I would argue that the terraforming that would require to get through that hill, be it a bridge or a, you know, just, just moving through that valley, there's like a twenty-foot valley or ten-foot valley, somewhere between that, let's call it a fifteen-foot valley, which we go back up and then we go back down into a marshy area and then go back up and there's the house. What we're proposing is to avoid what was planned in the subdivision, you know, um, because we feel like there may not have been a wet area at that time, um, when the subdivision was planned. Why? Because, uh, if I'm going to step away from that, uh, around here-ish, we have a pipe from another, uh, property draining under our site, which has created a wet area, right? So, I mean, what we are doing is give the, the thing of trying to be less disturbing to the site and when you see it topographically, to me it makes sense. And if I could bring the driveway up that way and avoid, definitely, I love trees, I'm thirty-two, dude, that hurt my soul a little bit when I heard that. Like, you're right, you noticed it. I saw it. If we can avoid, like, individual trees, I think that overall, the site will have, I don't know, like, be overall and less basic, even though it was originally designed to come off the subdivision.
Thanks. Uh, if I could just add, I, I, one of the things I neglected to mention was the presence of the dry stone walls, of which there are many on the property. And this design is, is going to interfere with them to some degree. It was one of the comments, of course, that George Baker made, that, uh, the wall should be reconstructed in a traditional dry stone fashion. And it's, what's important about that is the dry stone is laid for grade and you don't need a footing. So it's less disruption. And going in there with mortar and try and build the wall, you don't know what you're doing and it's going to be a recipe for disaster. And it's also not respectful treatment of what is, is really an important feature of our rural landscape overall. Also, you have, you get back to the, um, the wetland, um, it may not seem important to you, but there are some very important upstream functions that that wetland serves in, in terms of slowing the water down and, and gathering it and retaining it before it gets in, into the downstream area. Where it washes on the, the property of some of the people here, you know, who live along the, the Fall River Creek. So, uh, it's not, it's not something to be annoyed by. It's something to...
I'm trying to avoid it.
Okay. Um, but, uh, the, the, the fact that the pipe is coming out of the neighbor's house and draining their foundation, that water is not coming from another place. It's coming from rainwater that falls on that house.
Like, I still live over on my side of the point source. Yeah. I mean, a point source is different than a uniform blow. We know that, right? Like, and so if I'm laying sheet blow, blow over their, their lawn, that's different from collecting it all underground and shooting it out of my property, right? I mean, okay.
Sharon, um, had you completed your comments?
No.
So, sorry to interrupt.
Okay, so, um, yes, we, we entered the property, uh, the, where possible access would be off of the, uh, Barrett Tyler Road, cul-de-sac. And then we, uh, we walked over almost to the end of the proposed driveway going back to Agribank. Um, there is a pull off because of the length of the driveway for emergency vehicles. Um, but, uh, and it's, it pretty much follows the property line and really, uh, the site down to the road, there's really very, there's really no large trees in that section. It's about halfway up just before the pull-off where the big shank rock hit the green, the big white oak were about twenty feet apart on each side of the driveway. And it pulls the markers, the Saban. A little bit further up from that, I think, was another really nice, uh, white oak. Uh, also about in that same general area where those two trees were just to the north, uh, along the property line to the west, it's a ridge, a stone ridge on top, but there's a stone pile up. And some of the stones are just, it's not like a whole really nice stone wall, but there's, the stones are all piled up. And right where the road might go through, it has something that's driven through there and pushed them out. Uh, and then to the, to the west of that, uh, there's also the stones. And like I said, it's not a really great looking stone wall, but it is a historical stone wall. And we did discuss as Craig and George both mentioned, just replacing it, putting two ends on it with the driveway, so the driveway comes through with the stone wall on both sides. And then the two big trees, uh, it's, it is longer, it's far from Agribank, but it's, uh, a less destructive, um, to the environment, I think. And the, uh, the wetland, um, it's more like a burnable pool type of wetland. There's no standing water in it at the moment, but it's that time of the year for river pools and fowl hinders and frogs and whippings and burnable pools, and they're really important. Um, the septic system, the trees will then be taken down with a septic, uh, drain to go, of course. Uh, but where the, uh, set side of the property is, uh, those trees don't have to be taken down yet. So next time.
The expansion system, really. That's what we always do. We always develop closer to the development and then leave the expansion, fifty percent expansion towards the, towards the trees. So if we, we do have a failure, then, then we remove those trees at that time, but not until...
The, uh, the tree line to the west, it's, it's higher, um, like from the house, looking, you're looking uphill to the tree line, uh, all along the whole western side there. Craig did walk up there, so he might feel a little bit more on that. Um, the stone walls we touched on, the trees we touched on, the wetlands we touched on. I think that's it.
Other planning board members?
Maybe Craig and Sharon can fill me in. I'm still not clear about what would prevent having the driveway go off the existing Barrett Tyler.
What would prevent it?
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's really, there is that low lying marshland.
But you don't have to go off the cul-de-sac. You, I mean, easement parallels the property visit.
Uh, yeah, well, here's the thing. Uh, it, it's, it's very, it's very soft and mushy all through here and, and marshy. And this is where he has the, um, the wetland delineated. And as he said, you would end up having to drive down through a little bit of gully.
I guess what I'm talking about.
Right.
Exactly. You can go on any place along here, right? So you could go off here.
Correct. Yeah. Well, that's, that's a hill.
So, yeah, these, these tight, so if the line is right here, it's, it's like, if you see this line, this line, this oak, yeah, that's, this is, this is extremely steep. This is less steep. But even like, so, so where we did, you see this like big white area, what that represents is a...
It's at the bottom of a hump, right? It's like a saddle, right? Right in here. Is that where we walked?
Exactly.
So we came off of Barrett Tyler, we walked through, we had to go up and then we went down.
And whoa, that, like, that other stone wall, that's, that's, that's running like from here to here, that would be, this would have to be rebuilt if we, right, if it was a hush hunt, so it wouldn't have it. So, the answer, I, I, I don't really have an answer. I would say that it definitely, it could come off of Barrett Tyler, but I think that it would have, if I'm being, it would have less, um, total impact. And if we make some minor, like, basically, like, removing some brushes, we have, uh, so that's, that's my, very, very...
Can you see?
I do, I just a couple. Um, uh, do we have any pictures of where the stone wall would be disrupted and rebuilt? I mean, I'm not, I'm just curious, there's a lot of conversation on that.
Yeah, I, I, you don't, uh, but, yeah.
Um, if the, if the road was built, even though it has different complexities, off the cul-de-sac, I mean, it sounds like it's not easy either way. Is there still stone wall disruption and is a vol, like, what is the different volume of tree disruption that happened as a result of that? Is it very significant, I would assume?
I, overall, I would say that the stone walls get, like, would have to be rebuilt more.
On the other direction?
By coming off of Barrett, the original intention, just because the way we walked in was along that, like, stone wall, um, higher than the marshy area. So, right, so, so it'd be disrupting a marshy area, existing stone wall, likely, like, definitely less trees. There's no question about that. Distance is, is, is less, but the impact of those trees, um, you know, to, to Sharon's point was, like, I don't know, if you go on site, there's like a, just like, you can only, I'm, I'm good at seeing things in my mind. This one's like obvious. Like, you just look at it, it's like, boom. Uh, because there aren't a lot of trees and you don't have to use your imagination a lot, but the, the flow is there. Now, flanking, that's the tree that they're talking about, the, uh, different conversation, but like that actual, like, you know, ten to, like, fifteen foot, like swath, you could just kind of see it happen. As opposed to, I mean, literally the grade, you like park, you go down, you go up, and you go back down, and then you go back up to the house level. So there's a true, two, like, there's two valleys in this property. And that, that driveway, I don't think was considered by the original subdivision as like, I, to Jim's point, like, you know, I would like to see how that one's engineered as well, you know? This one I can see in my mind, the, the one off of Barrett Tyler takes a little bit more imagination.
I think that's where we're going to go. I, I think Jim's, one of Jim's comments earlier was, um, perhaps the desirability of moving this to C P L and asking them to review, particularly the driveway aspects of this application. It certainly makes sense to me at this time to bring that forward as a recommendation of my colleagues who agree.
I also would like to see an abnormal student, too. But it seems like there was a lot of context in this site visit, abnormal volume and discussion that they wouldn't mind just getting a little more.
Are you suggesting a second site visit?
I don't want to overstep. I just would like to see it. It would, that's the, I mean...
I would, I would suggest if we're going to be making a recommendation to C P L, that they should be doing a site visit. And when they schedule that site visit, you would be able to, or other planning board members has to be timed. So it should choose to go on and do that.
Can I say the quiet part out loud?
Yes.
Um, we, we got a long year back problem, right? Because of that area. And if I don't remove these trees soon, I'm going to be, I'm going to be in trouble in that, in that past, because I can't start construction until October.
A lot of work to do before...
Is that the board's position is to hold off my client until October?
No, it's not a position to hold off your clients. A position we get the information we think we need and don't seem to be able to get all these questions answered tonight unless I'm listening, so.
So, there are two things.
That's like really heartbreaking, to be honest with the board. I know that's not your problem, but, but, I don't know. I feel like, I feel like I pushed pretty hard last time to really get all the information. And like, if we can't agree to what trees get removed, my client spent, like, thousands of dollars to pay two people to go out and survey all of these trees, right? That happened, right? So that costs like real world money. And now we're at a position where I'm looking at, oh, well, we need, we need an engineer to take a look at it, to prevent you from removing trees, even though I tried to work with, like, and I did with, like, our, the board, because we went out there. Um, like, I just, I tried it like really hard to kind of understand.
I didn't get a sense, correct me if I'm wrong, I didn't get a sense that I was hearing a consensus this evening that you're ready to approve this plan. Am I incorrect in that or help me out here?
Yeah, I, I think there were a number of things, like the, um, clear delineation of the cul-de-sac plan that I think more further investigation.
So even though you want the driveway, you're considering the driveway going through the wetlands, and what you want me to delineate, I'm going up the street away from the wetlands, you want to hold us off until October in order to delineate that? Like, that's what I'm hearing. And like, like, that's going to be bad news. Like, I'm going to have a hard time explaining that to my clients, you know? Like, okay, that's...
Two, a couple things.
Is there anything we can do with the long year back so I'd make sure, so I can like remove these trees at some point between March and October?
So, I, I think the location of the driveway is a big discussion, and it does relate to potential removal of trees. There are two things that I've noticed in this conversation now. One is that the rock walls on the site are delineated, are shown on, on the plan. We usually request those so we know where they are, so we can talk about it.
Just go to this now. Got it. All right, Jim. Got it.
It's not my responsibility to make sure your existing conditions are shown on your plans. I'm here to let you know what needs to be done. So, with that, the bigger deal is that your phase one A and one B actually delineated the driveway from the cul-de-sac up to Agribank Road. So if we're going to be talking about a driveway that goes to Agribank Road, it has to do a phase one A and one B that follows the alignment of the driveway that goes to Agribank Road. And with that, you are proposing to remove trees that will go along with that driveway line. So if we don't have a phase one A that goes on the driveway alignment, we're proposing to take down trees, you go with the driveway alignment, it doesn't have a phase one A that has to be completed in order for this to move forward. It can't move forward. This doesn't provide the information we need for the phase one A. And I don't see how the planning board could talk about moving trees until we are sure of where that driver's going to go.
We could talk a little bit more about this, if the sites have to work. Given George's report and what I'm hearing from Craig and looking at the topo lines on the map, it seems to me that it doesn't make sense to... it seems to me that it doesn't make sense to try to use the existing Barrett Tyler access. You know, it sounds like it's extremely steep, both up and down. And there's, there are also rock walls there. And I'm hearing from Craig, who did the site visit, that it's very marshy. So my own view is I'm pretty ready to exclude that as a possibility. That may mean that there are still unanswered questions on the road from Akron Hook. But I don't know, how the rest of you think about this? Is there still a question in your mind about what the rope should be to get to the post?
I, I had asked Zach about the Barrett Tyler connection as we were walking out to our cars. And I think the answer that he gave me was it had something to do with an easement. Do you need to get an easement, or does the property join the Barrett Tyler alignment? Even though there's not a road there, there's at least an alignment.
I don't know exactly, but the typical subdivision rules are like there's an easement of like a shared driveway, right? So that was built into the subdivision. And so, you know, that would just be an existing legal easement that we would utilize.
It exists already?
I don't know for sure, but just in my experience, like when you make a subdivision, like, there has to be a legal way to get from the road to like all those properties. And so that, like, that road becomes like the easement, like, for, like, as a part of that subdivision.
It was the Securivich subdivision, and I feel pretty sure that these, these for each lot have that easement in the...
And also, one of the, part of the logic for that is that you're going to have a lot that's got the access off of the access road that's part of the planned subdivision. And not have to, you know, break onto Akron Hook Road at a different place and have multiple points of entry.
Unless, unless your entry is so steep going up and down, that it is not feasible, which is what I kind of heard, unless I'm wrong.
Well, yeah, and also, that, it's, it's kind of a, kind of a water channel. It's like a, it's like a water slide that goes down, it's all marshy and muddy. And the way that the drive is laid out, it kind of hugs that, it hugs that path that the water takes to get off of property. And if you look, there are two big rock promontories. And they have to build an elevated sewage disposal system because there's not enough soil underneath to perp. So a lot of these trees are, they're not holding on to much, but they are helping to hold the soil against the infangment. And by taking out a concentration of them, just because they're, you know, within X amount of feet of the center line of the driveway where it's laid out, or however that decision was made.
So are you agreeing that it doesn't make sense to do a driveway off Barrett Tyler?
No, no, I, no.
You still think you've got it?
I would like, yes, I would like to find out. Because it seems to be that, I mean, half the tree removal has taken place between the house and the road for the purpose of the driveway.
Okay, so despite the steepness, the topography of that area and the marshiness, you would do a driveway off of it?
And as, you would have to see the site because there's a, there's a, there's a hill that you go down and then you come back up. But if you're standing there at the, at the brow of this, of this hill, just about where the, the pull-up is, it gets very, very steep. It's down to Akron Hook. So that's a, it's a much steeper, much longer installation to get a driveway in there. Whereas, you know, you go like 150 feet and you're on Barrett Tyler. It's already created, it's already cleared, and it's a straight shot out to Akron. Not a straight shot, but...
Which requires us to go perpendicular around two drainage places and either create a bridge or bore out of the hill.
I'm sure there must be some solution there.
That's the only two. To go straight, you have to bridge, or you have to go down and through a...
But a lot of that has to do with where exactly your wetland is. And is that bridle pool that, you know, that marshy area, is that included?
We know what wetlands do in the interest, right? They go around, they go, that's right. And we are going to survey the plants out, so.
What is your consensus?
I think there's more information before that, we, Greg?
The, the trees, could be at least the white oaks and the hickories be marked on the map? So to know where they are in their, their road conditions?
Yes.
Um, I think, I think, I think there's some investigating needs to be done. And I think we need to do it obviously as timely and efficiently as we can, not delay this, you know, down the line. But I think we can't, we can't make a decision without investigation.
In that case, if we're all done here, and we're asked if there's anyone here from the public who wishes to comment on this application at this time? I don't see anyone. Then I think we're looking for a motion to adjourn. Continue the public hearing?
Confirming an agreement with the marking the oaks and the walls as...
So we're looking, we're looking in the interim, we're looking for some updates. Some things added to the plants and trees, changes in the trees, the delineation of where the stone walls are, whether those added to the segment?
Got it. Revision of Phase 1A and 1B, less than where the driveway is supposed to go, because right now it's not, it's showing up. Now, before, and Craig said, right, like, that's true. Before we get yet another, yeah. How do we engage with, is it CPL? How do we engage with CPL? Like, not that we aren't going to engage with them, but like...
You refer it to them.
You're going to refer it to them. And then they're going to, they're going to, they're going to review. So is there anything I can do with these trees, or is, or like, is there anything the board can say, like, to help us out? Or when I leave this meeting, do I have to tell them? Is it just like, I can't disturb that site, like, if I made a decision? Like, that's, I just want to bring it on to the board, that is a huge decision to make. I'm losing...
But you told me you don't have approval.
I know, I know that, that I know.
Well, what are you, are you asking for a sort of approval?
I'm asking for, well, I mean, a condition approval, right? But like, is, of course, of course. But, um, got it. So the board didn't do the, was it January or the February?
I've lost track.
Okay. So, right, I lost a month for no reason. And now I thought I had enough time, I had planned enough time, so that I wouldn't hurt these paths, right? And that's what we carried on. So now what do I do?
Well, so there's some pictures of the, of the dead bark hickorys, so that, you know, we all know what they look like. Everybody is, if anybody's interested, goes to look at them, they look like, and the reason why, they're important for bats. And also the, the white oak set, pull the markers on. And maybe find out why some of these trees like those were selected to be taken down, because it seems like there's no, they're not in the way of anything. But they're easy to take down. They're healthy looking, they're out of the way.
Would your site visit, did your site visit reveal to you that there are, I don't know if the word is significant, or a number of dead trees that could be removed?
Yeah, there were some, and I, I think those are actually reflected on the, on the tree plan that was part of this electronic submission.
Well, I'm suggesting that if you've documented that, and if the field business points that, and if you work with the building department, because if people see activity on your property, removing trees when you don't have an approval to build an apartment, they'll contact you. So I don't know that that, I don't know where that gets you, but I think that would fall within our ability to, you could come in and apply to remove dead trees. It has nothing to do with the overall approval. So is that...
That, thank you for that call.
But no, that's fine.
I have a question. CPL, are we going to ask them to look at the access off Barrett Tyler dramatic and opine on whether a driveway is possible through that road? And if that is the case, is it possible that a Phase A and B on the driveway route could be unnecessary? Right? I mean, I'm a little confused here.
Well, it depends on where the driveway goes, because right now, this is the Phase 1A and 1B assessment by the staff. And it shows the driveway going to the cul-de-sac. The proposal by the applicant is to take the driveway out here, so there ain't no Phase 1A or B to drive out to Akron Hook.
If they were to change, and though this was the condition?
Right.
If you knock out different feet and load all the part of the ACL?
Right.
Right, one or the other has to be updated. Right now, I think this is an improvement. Archaeology's showing this, and the site plan's showing that. So we've got to show the same thing for the assessment.
But depending upon what CPL has to say about the feasibility of the driveway off Barrett Tyler, this board may conclude that it is better to do it that way. In which case, if they do Phase A and B for all the entire driveway route, that would be unnecessary. This is sort of a timing issue.
You can ask CPL to do as quickly as possible. And to be favor reviewing on the feasibility of the driveway off Akron Hook? Or are they also doing like design work and looking at, or I guess it wouldn't be design work, I guess it could be design work though, because...
If they're doing design, I mean, they're just going to take a look at this the same way I would, just from an engineering lens, because I'm not a, an engineer. And just let, we look at the board input, just whether or not they think, you know, this driveway off the cul-de-sac is reasonable, feasible in their opinion. Based on what they see, or whether, you know, the other one is, I'm also going to want the business to double check, still focus on anything on the other driveway, because that's what engineers do. That was my initial thought, just to confirm the one, to make sure that's all, I'll take over, like, say it's under 14% of the volume. And then just give a couple of things on this, and take its feasibility.
Double check.
I'm not an engineer.
Sorry.
My final question is...
It's a, it's a, it's a somewhat...
All right, I get it.
If you do go off of Barrett Tyler, who picks the road from the subdivision to cul-de-sac? Because there's nothing there, so it would...
Well, what's funny enough is that one of our properties, like, didn't, uh, one of the, excuse me, one of the properties in the subdivision didn't use that road, didn't use the easement, and actually got another driveway from another location. I mean, it wouldn't be the first one, it wouldn't be setting the precedent.
It's all in the document here. Somehow, whatever the document says is how it'll have to be handled through some maintenance initial...
All right, where I think we are is we're going to continue the public hearing. So April 1st, we're going to refer the application to CPL. We're going to refer you to work with the building department to, based on the site visit that was made by Sharon and George and Craig, to proceed, again, with the building department, to remove the dead trees on the property. Does that reflect everything that we talked about? Have I missed anything? Does that make...
Delineation.
Let me know. May I have that motion?
Well, the Phase 1A and 1B have that.
May I have that motion? So, well, like you, Sharon, so can I, like, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those extension.
Thank you.
Yes, Jeffrey Valenti, 68309, site plan review change. There's no one here for this application this evening. They're still waiting on, on the department to help. They have asked for continuation of the public hearing until April 1st. Is anyone here from the public? Any comments from planning board members about this continuing the application? Anyone here from the public? May I hear a motion to continue to April 1st? Thank you, Melissa. Second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Close extensions. Next, Mike Tree Service, resign, site plan review for the use of the front office or the medical office. Again, we have a request from the applicant to continue the public hearing until April 1st. Any questions, comments from planning board members? Anyone here from the public? Here right now, may I have a motion to continue the public hearing?
Second.
Martian by Sharon, second by Cheryl, favor?
Aye.
Close, extensions. Uh, the last public hearing this evening is Rockledge, 492 Akron Hook Road. Site plan review, special independent, and wetland estimate for condo limits. We have not received any new information from the accused. Emma, Emily's report is recusing herself. We have not received any new information from the applicant since our special meeting. And the applicant has requested a continuation of the public hearing until April 1st. It is my recommendation, based on the information that we yet to receive, that we continue that public hearing until May 6th. If there are questions from planning board members, I will tip them now. If not, I will then open a public hearing from the public. Planning board members, any questions? Okay. Well, I'm opening it up for a public comment. I'm asked here again to come to the microphone, name, address, comments. The comments have already been made. We would expect to ask you to speed your place in the queue to the next person.
Hi, Ms. Eric Well, 467 Akron Hook Road. I just have a quick clarifying question before people start to comment. You've continued to May 6th?
I did.
Not April 1st?
That's correct.
Okay.
I, no, wait. I said I made that recommendation.
Oh, okay, no, no, fair enough.
We're not as a planning board taking that vote yet. It's my recommendation to my colleagues that we do that.
Okay. And it's, it's our understanding that a list of questions that came up from the special meeting were presented to the Rockledge folks to respond to?
We did not present the listed questions.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
We did not, my knowledge.
Okay, and what were the, um...
And let me tell you why. They are here, they hear your comments.
Right.
The meeting is videoed, all of that is available to them. I don't believe it's Gretchen's responsibility to keep track of the questions.
Understood, we were not expecting that to happen, but that was something that some of us were told. So I just wanted to clarify that with the board. And then are we able to ask what the information is that you're still waiting for from them?
The responses to the questions that were raised in the meeting.
Oh, that, that they will have noted themselves?
Or that they will review the video.
You were, okay, okay, okay.
So I'm presuming that between their note-taking, the materials that you've made available in writing, many of you have sent letters, that information is passed on to them. And their ability to review the video should comprehensively allow them to respond to all of the questions that were open-ended that night and did not get answered.
Okay, super. And do you know, are they open to receiving additional questions?
It's a public hearing, if you can ask questions.
But they will get passed on tonight? I noticed they're not here tonight, so, so I don't know whether they would flag. Anyway, I...
I think we would flag.
I would say you know is probably the best, because they're not here, and that way I can forward it to them directly to them.
Got it, okay. Thank you very much.
Hi. My name's Patty Lanto, I live at 220 Blaine Road. And I am very concerned about the Rockledge development, in particular about the wastewater treatment plant and its effect on the environment. I'm trying to... I'm trying to follow the process that we can avail ourselves of in order to question and impress on the planning board how important it is to us that due diligence is, is done with respect to everything that Rockledge is proposing. So, myself and some concerned neighbors have put together a document which will be submitted to the planning board, and I'm going to read an excerpt from it into the record. So, my understanding is that the developer filled out a form that's available out on the website called the EAF, and I take exception to many of the answers that they provided. So I don't know what recourse we have if we disagree with the answers that they provided on the EAF, hence this, this list of questions. The developer answered no to all questions based on its paid consultant's reviews. Here are some key issues and concerns we have, and we ask and ask, and are, that we ask, be addressed by the planning board, and that agencies receive a copy of this letter. Eighteen thousand five hundred and sixty-one gallons per day increase over the current aquifer demand from Rhinebeck residents, not only in the immediate neighborhood, but extending to wells used by residents whose wells tap into and are lying on the aquifer. We don't know if this will impact the town of Rhinebeck and the village of Rhinebeck's public water system as well. Has this been considered and evaluated by an independent expert? It's very important to us that we not rely only on the experts that Rockledge has presented, because those could be skewed in their favor. Several of the analysis points in the stormwater convention plan refer to treatment. So, what does this treatment entail? Will the stormwater be filtered through the wastewater treatment plant or otherwise released into the intermittent stream in the wetlands buffer zone? Has the effect of this combined outflow to the stream bed during heavy storms been analyzed? Will the Rockledge 36 condominium development increase from at least eighteen thousand five hundred and sixty-one gallons per day? That's what the developers document. They document that it could be a higher number of over twenty thousand gallons per day. And could this cause a reduction in existing Rhinebeck residents' well water, both in the surrounding homes and the larger area? What ongoing measurement system will be put in place to ensure accountability of complying with the daily usage projection? What recourse will be afforded the local community if the daily usage projection is underestimated and daily discharge exceeds this projection? We also have some questions about the well testing that was done. Eleven wells, according to the record, were tested. We're not sure that, that that's sufficient to, to cover what could happen if the aquifer is drained. How deep are the wells on the Rockledge property? Are they deeper than the 31 residents on Hager Creek, between the line perm rows and other wells on the surrounding roads? How deep are wells in the entire neighborhood? Has this been reviewed in light of the estimated eighteen thousand plus gallons per day for the proposed Rockledge development? Will the planning board or the town board require the developer and builder, both LLCs, create a bond if neighborhood wells are negatively impacted by the additional eighteen thousand plus per day draw? Does the 72-hour test answer these critical questions? There's also a confusing issue of mixing and processing both stormwater and black water through the wastewater treatment plant. Will this increase the chance that it will be overloaded and malfunction? This goes to water usage as well. Is the stormwater segregated and used for purposes that do not require filterable potable water from the wells? This could dramatically reduce the drain on the aquifer. There were only eleven wells tested. While, while wells tested in the immediate vicinity of Rockledge may not have had significant water flow reductions, what about the 31 other residents? Will the grassmere development scheduled also use well water from the same aquifer as the Rockledge development? And what planning has the town of Rhinebeck planning board done to ensure well water will not be polluted by the proposed Rockledge condominium development wastewater plant or the impact on access to fresh water in residents' wells? An independent expert outside of the local area with high-level expertise is required, and under secret, the planning board has the authority to require this be completed at the developer's cost, since his company is the ultimate beneficiary of the development he had commissioned. There is more, would you like?
Well, I, I do, you know, we routinely request people to keep their comments to five minutes.
Okay. Has that been over five? I have no concept of how long it takes to read something.
Maybe four or five minutes.
Sure, okay.
But I'm just, I'm asking you to be cognizant of that.
Okay. All right. Okay. I'll skip down a bit. And the existing wastewater plant is located in the wetland buffer, based on the 2021 DEC determination. How does this affect changes, improvements, or repairs to the plant now and in the future? We understand that the current wastewater plant in place has no tertiary process or filtration to prevent chemical, pharmaceutical, microplastic, oxygen depletion, or other specified contaminants from being discharged with the estimated fourteen thousand gallons per day release into the intermittent stream that feeds into Fallsburg Creek, a federal, state, and state wetland, and other connected wetlands on private and public properties. What provisions being made to ensure tertiary filtration process and state-of-the-art filtration will be implemented? What will happen if the wastewater plant results in degradation of the wetlands and surrounding watershed? What about its impact on soil for the agricultural properties close to the Rockledge proposed development? Will an alternate wastewater plant be required to be funded by the developer to cover this expense as part of the permit requirements? What happened to all the property soil and well use that lie along the waters that include Fallsburg Creek and otherwise connect to or abut it? Has a study been done to document the impact? We're asking the planning board to require an independent expert to present options now available, since New York City has done a lot of research into state-of-the-art filtration systems in the Catskill region. There are underground septic systems capable of processing the development without impacting the intermittent stream on, on the property where the wastewater treatment plant release will occur. The developer has stated that underground septic was investigated and rejected. What investigation was performed? Can we see the options reviewed? Was it deemed impossible based on increased housing density? Or would underground septic at a lower housing density be viable? I'll stop there.
Hi, my name's Cala Sherad, I'm at 323 Hager Creek Road, I've been there for 34 years. I have one question for the planning board, and then some other questions. When Kara was up here, you were telling her that all the questions that we proposed at the last meeting were on the video, and that Rockledge would look through that and answer the questions. My question for you guys is, don't you guys have any questions? You didn't ask them when they were doing their whole presentation last time, one question? You didn't allow us to ask questions? You're leaving it up to them to look through the video and say, oh, they want to know about this, this, and this? We want answers to the questions.
And that's what we're working together. That doesn't mean we don't have questions, but right now, this is a public hearing, and we're trying to get through our questions, and so the time will come when the planning boards will ask their questions, and we'll have a conversation as we move through the secret process. Haven't been part of the secret process before, or you have not attended one? I will cite the grassmere one as the most recent one that we went through. And we go through as a planning board, question by question, line by line, and we have a discussion about what we know, what we don't know, what we think, what we feel. Can you all agree that that is the process we follow?
May I ask a question about that? Is that before or after the part one of the EAF is passed? Because from what my understanding is...
They submit a part one.
Right.
We do...
You know, it's about three.
We do parts two and three.
Okay.
We, we, like any other applicant who comes before us, if they're required to submit a part one, they submit their part one. We then will do our parts. Jim, can you explain it better than I'm doing here?
So that, that's how we're, so the applicant, an applicant is required to submit part one. That's their information, they submit to the planning board, the planning board reviews it, the planning board consultants, myself.
And that was done, to my understanding, correct?
Part one?
Yes.
Oh yeah, it's been done, and then they, and then they...
It's part of the application process.
So where are we at in that? Are you guys asking them questions now?
We will ask our questions as we move through parts two and three.
And will that be public?
Yes.
Okay. And will we be able to ask questions? Because at the last meeting, I was basically told I was not to ask questions.
It is a special meeting to allow them to present their information.
So my question is, will I be able to ask questions at this?
You will be able to continue to ask questions. I don't believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, that once we start moving through the part two and three, that becomes a dialogue, more of a dialogue at the planning board level.
Done, done in a public setting, in a public meeting, so that everyone can see the discussions that take place and the decisions that are made.
That does not, the, the process of going through that does not necessarily close to public hearing. The public hearing can continue past the point of that discussion.
My other question for you is, at the presentation that Rockledge did last month, all of the people for Rockledge were facing you guys, talking to you guys with their back to the public. We couldn't see any of the slides up here. The only time anybody turned and talked to the people in public was when Mr., uh, what's his name? Blakeman turned around and said, "You guys are acting on fear, and you should be looking at the facts." First of all, let's be real clear, we're not acting out of fear, we're acting out of concern for our neighborhood. And second of all, if we had the facts, we could have a dialogue, but we don't have the facts. We have a lot of questions, and they're not being answered. And that's, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Barry Sherad, I'm a former highway superintendent, town of Rymick. I addressed to the board last month regarding the Rockledge project. I live at 323 Ackert Hill Road, this is my wife Kelly, and we're very concerned about the development at Rockledge, that density of development, and I presented that to the board last month from the perspective of a highway superintendent. But I also presented that concern as a resident, and we don't know what the true traffic increase on Hager Creek Road will be. I told the board there are roughly thirty residences on Hager Creek Road right now, developed parcels, houses with people living in them. Rockledge wants to put an additional 36 units in, and that's more than doubling the population on the road, the traffic. But by their own admission here, I see that, based on their traffic assessment, they will have 148 parking spaces versus the 31 residents. So that really brings a bit more up to like a 300% increase, not a 100% increase. So my concern is that. My, my, also, my concern, and I think this was glossed over much earlier, about the southern entry-exit point for the Rockledge development on Haggerty Hill Road, the top of Haggerty Hill Road. I know there was some resistance to doing that, I'm not quite sure why. It was alluded to sightlines, I could tell you, the sightlines could be improved fairly easily. If that's the case, if it were a wetland issue, there are no delineated wetlands on that right away. They have 315 feet of road frontage that comes in off of Haggerty. Having a useful second entrance not only is good from an emergency services standpoint, because Hillside Fire Department, if they do respond to a call, is going to respond from Haggerty Hill Road. That would be point one. But point two is, right now, the entire population of Rockledge is going to spill out on the north entrance exit of Rockledge, which is right in the middle of our section of Hager Creek. Having a second entrance somewhere to allow the southbound traffic to exit south and the northbound traffic to exit north would go a long way toward mitigating some of the traffic concerns I have. There's also a couple of choke points in the road that are unstable right now. As it stands, a school bus and a car can't pass in two areas on Hager Creek Road. That's dangerous, and it's only going to get worse if you increase the traffic by 100, 200, or 300%. So I won't drag this on, I put this all in writing in an email, I think you've all received that we also have a lot of questions we're submitting on the EAF. But these are serious questions we have for our community, and we're not against the development at Rockledge, we just want it to be done responsibly in a way that doesn't negatively impact our environment, because we've been there for 34 years, and we have just as many rights as Rockledge. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Lynda Cakin, 373 Hager Creek Road. I just had a couple of questions to begin with about the EF part one. So the, obviously, you know, we've, we've now reviewed it since the February 5th hearing. That, quite honestly, was not a very thorough presentation of the current plan. It was more like a historical explanation of their process from an in to the current plan. But it didn't go into, really, there was no just discussion about the wastewater treatment plan. We don't understand what exactly that plan entails. Does it address some of our questions that Patty raised? Or doesn't it? And I think that part of the frustration, Kelly and other people, and myself, raised is that, well, we understand that the public comment section is for us to ask questions. It, it's been over four years since I've lived here, where we're asking questions, and they seem to sort of fall into the ether without a response. And if the, we're left, we're leaving it to the developer to decide whether or not to answer our questions. So far, I haven't seen those questions answered, and I believe that's, that's true for many people that I've spoken to. I have some specific questions about the historic buildings on the property. Have there been architectural plans that have been submitted to the board to review? Because I, I'm not aware that...
What are the adaptive for use?
For the actual layout of the, of the buildings and everything else. And that's been reviewed from, I guess, I would imagine, because they're historic buildings, there's certain standards on maintenance of, you know, the original layout and the original windows. I mean, I've attended a couple of planning board meetings where the addition of a window in a historic building has created hours and hours of discussion. So when will those plans be reviewed publicly so we can understand what's happening in those historic buildings?
Well, I believe that SHPO is involved. That's my understanding, it's a tax credit project, and SHPO will be working with them, and SHPO will be signing on in terms of what's acceptable to changes to the building. I can only say, and I know others of you, I can't remember who has and who hasn't made the site, because the interior of the building itself was dramatically changed by the presence of daytime. So I can assure you that there is very little, I speak with someone, this is my profession, I would say the upper floors of the building, there's very little integrity left of the interior, that's my general recollection. There are some character-defining features on the first floor, that my recollection, without having the plans in front of me, is that they are retaining them as part of their overall design going forward in adaptive use and data. So I can't, I can't tell you off the top of my head when those plans were submitted, particularly for the manor house itself, but they've been on the table for quite some time now.
So is there a SHPO response? I mean, the only, uh, SHPO letter I saw was with respect to the archaeological, um...
I don't know where SHPO is in the processes.
Okay, so...
Doesn't mean that they aren't. It just means, I'm sorry, I can't run away from this.
Okay. So again, to my question was, when are, when is the planning board going to require the developer to provide the public with a presentation of the adaptive, the actual architectural plans for the adaptive reuse?
What you mean? I, I think it has been presented in the past, but, um...
I've, I've never heard it and I think I've been to pretty much every meeting. So...
We'll, we'll check on that.
Okay. Be, thank you. Um, with respect to the daytop buildings that, um, you know, the developer mentioned are required for storage, there's forty-three thousand seven-hundred-and-fifteen square feet of, uh, that constitute the daytop buildings. Has the planning board evaluated whether or not that much storage could possibly be required? And is there a hesitation on the planning board's part to not require removal of some or all of those structures because end of concern for either the cost to the developer or the release of asbestos or dealing with potential lead paint issues?
I think that, had that discussion?
Also, with respect to the historic buildings, obviously, they're very old and there's probably asbestos. I mean, have they been tested for asbestos and lead paint? And has a determination been made as to whether or not there is presence of either of those toxic substances? And what would be, who would be making the requirements of how those buildings would be renovated in such that the, the release of any particles, asbestos or lead paint would be released into the atmosphere, the water, the soil and the environment?
That's my understanding. And I get no vision of what the actual development now if there are certain standards that are required when that work takes place that is beyond the standards of the planning board to establish and has to follow, you know, codes and, you know, he would be required as part of his building plans to actually provide details on how he would mitigate and deal with asbestos and, and lead paint and other contaminants.
Yeah, well, the, the ETA has the standards for the release of lead paint. And they're pretty strict about that. They are now disengaged inspectors around, but that's, you know, that's not on us.
Well, you know, saying it's not on us, I mean, I don't, I'm, I don't know, you know, exactly. And I'm, I'm not, when I'm asking questions, I'm not asserting that it is your responsibility. I'm trying to find out. It's got to be somebody's responsibility.
When we approve or discipline, but, but, let's just talk in general about any application request. When it achieves the level of approval, it then goes to the building department. Then the applicant then has to submit building plans to the building inspector. That's where code enforcement comes in place. Planning board is not involved in code enforcement.
Okay. So, um, is this an unusual-sized project for Reinbeck?
I would say it's a large project for Reinbeck.
Yeah. And as far as I understand, there's one inspector for all of Reinbeck construction?
That's correct. And I can tell you that in cases where we feel that, um, I can give you an example, that the project itself rises to a level of needing additional support in the building department, we would press that and we would hire the applicant. For example, of a project going on now on the former master ports, which some of you may have heard of, for the construction of a train.
Of a train?
Of a train.
Okay.
Of a train. Um, and it is a miniature train. It's not a train, but it is a train that, it's a train nonetheless. And it is a train that is on tracks and vessels that are supposed to go. Our building inspector here, um, honestly and forthrightly indicated that he was not, did not feel qualified to inspect and certify the safety of the train. We then required the applicant to pay for the services of an independent engineer qualified to do the inspections as the construction was taking place. So if you're asking whether or not we are aware of these exigencies with larger priorities, we are. We try to look at that. And if we feel in our judgment, and in speaking with the part-time building inspector, that we need additional services, we will not hesitate to ask for those.
Right, because he works three days a week, right? He's a part-time, as you mentioned.
I said he's part-time.
Yeah, right. And given the extraordinary growth in building in Reinbeck, I imagine we probably need a few people, but...
Well, we are always looking for a part-time worker.
If I could only go back to school and learn something else, but I, I just finished that program, so I think I'm a little tired. So the, the, I guess, we're also concerned about the archaeological assessment. You mentioned SHPO. I didn't see in the files, um, sort of a follow-up and to see whether, and I just have a question, whether, um, Harken Archaeological Associates, in fact, provided their report to SHPO? And if SHPO made any sort of evaluation and, and provided a copy of that to the board?
We would have forwarded the report as we received it to SHPO. If SHPO responded, I'd have to go back to the files.
So I guess one of the questions that, um, and I'm not speaking only for myself, but others who are concerned about these things. The secret process is moving forward, but even the developer mentioned during their presentation that they're still waiting for a number of approvals, um, waiting for reports, SHPO and, and other agencies. Should this be moved, is it really right to move through the secret process when there's so many things that are, you know, yet, um, delivered to the planning board that would require, that are required of this project?
We, we want all the information that we need to begin the secret process and to go into that. No, we don't want to, I don't want to charge Jim with doing work. I don't want anybody to begin to write anything for us or begin to lead us through a process to find that we don't have all the information. Hence the repetitive nature of us asking for more information. We don't want to spin our wheels reviewing things. Jim's got a lot of drafting due, he's got, you talk about four years. I could talk about more years than four in terms of the accumulated paperwork associated with this project. So in order to pull that together and to go rationally through the process, we want it all on our table as well as you do. So we're not going to start into something until we feel we have the information we need to adequately move through that process.
So in terms of the process, and I appreciate that, this, while the secret one is submitted, obviously, to make the developer.
EF part.
EF part one. Um, the next step is part two.
It's two and three.
Two and three. Right, three would be, right. So the question I have is, if you want everything and all the information that you need, are you going to delay the part two evaluation until you have all these agencies' approvals, denials, requests for more information? Um, so that, you know, you're not spinning your wheels, we're not showing up over and over again to planning board meetings and asking you questions that you may not have answers to. And, you know, there's no point creating more frustration than we all already have. So I guess, you know, we, we'd like to understand at what point, you know, one, what's missing? Like, if the planning board could provide the public with a list, this is what's missing. And of course, adding to that are all the questions that we've asked and the attorney that we've hired has asked and pointed to issues with respect to the EF, EF part one, to make sure that we have all the information and you have all the information that you need to effectively, um, continue with part two and then eventually part three. And in terms of public involvement, given the significance and the uniqueness of the proposal, of the development, I, I would ask, and I know Kelly was asking this question as well, to what extent, and, and can we? And I assert that we want to ask questions about, during the part two process. I, I think that, until we have, because we don't have all the information, and there are a lot of questions about choices that have been made by the developer, which may be good for the developer, might not be good for Reinbeck. And we want to make sure that we're able to continue to ask these questions. And ask questions specifically to the developer. Because the planning, I don't, I'm concerned that the planning board's sort of in the middle, which is, I guess, your role, between the developer and, and the public who has concerns. But I don't know that there's, might be more effective for the public to simply, you know, have the developer, whoever their experts or consultants are, ask them direct questions. Like, let's, you know, and I, I mean, I offered four years ago when I came to my first meeting about this. And I turned to them and said, you know, I'd be happy to have a meeting and I'm sure there are other neighbors who would like, who like Barry, who are incredibly skilled and have history in this town and can, can add information and, and work to create something that isn't going to be, you know, opposed because, so part of this is just opposing the process, which is confusing and laborious and incomplete. Um, and not really being clear where the planning board is. As Kelly mentioned, when you don't ask questions of the developer, it's curious to us, whereas the gentleman who was here earlier was, you know, you asked him so many questions and very effectively walked through his process. But we haven't seen that with Rockledge. It's sort of, they s...
This is a long process. And I, I can't, I don't know how to convince you. There are a lot of questions that have been asked a long way.
So after the, each, uh, part two and part three are done, what would be next?
So the way, the way that this has been discussed with planning boards, attorney John Lyons and figure, is that the planning board needs to run through the secret process, go through the part two and three, and then make a determination of significance. That determination of significance will get the planning board to the plan deciding whether or not we have all the adequate information we need and whether or not the issues that have been discussed and are required of the state environmental assessment form. Yes, Ron, you have to answer every single one of these questions. This is just an example. We'll answer every single one of these. And it's, you know, no or small impact may occur or moderate to large impact may occur. And those are the questions that we have to ask through the process. And we get to the end of it, and there are a lot of them. It's going to take a while. The whole planning board then has to go back and look at each of the boxes to see, is there something where we know that an impact would occur? And then it's the discussion and private to the planning board to decide whether or not those issues rise to the level of requesting more information, going back to the planning board, discussing something else, whatever the case may be. This guides us as to what we do. Once this process is done and completed with whatever the decision is by the planning board, if it's going to move, you know, assuming it'll move forward. If it moves forward, then the next step is the ZVA review process.
So when would this scoping session occur?
I believe that you got, you asked John that question last month and he said that he wouldn't know. I, I don't remember. Do you remember John's answer? He said it wasn't actually necessary.
I agree with what he said, is that there is not a scoping session for the EAF review of this. A scoping session is something that's done if we go to further review, like if a, um, the segment of the breaking tail step, we're not going to say it would be necessary. That's when the scoping session comes in. The scoping session by that term is not what we do as part of the EAF. We will go through in detail and discuss all of this stuff, each of these items, as we go through, regardless of the information we have. But that, yeah, we'd have to go back and see exactly how John determined that.
Well...
And we'll ask him to reconfirm. I don't want to go back and I don't want to speak for John. I do know you raised that question at the last meeting and you got an answer, so...
Not really. He said, he said that he was, you know, the, the board would have to make a determination as to whether or not scoping was required.
Well, and that we won't do that until...
Right. So I guess I'm curious if, you know, going through parts two and three are going to be reliant on the existing reports that the developer so far has, has paid consultants to provide?
Also remember that we have reports that are coming in from people that are not paid by the...
Yeah, right. So the engineer, right, which I think, you know, we're curious about whether or not the engineer has reviewed the water treatment plant infrastructure. Is there, is there, I mean, I remember that, um, Mr. Trumbull asked, you know, is there going to be sort of a backup system to make sure that redundancy is, is in place? That would be, I, the presentation about that would go a long way to providing the public with an opportunity to understand.
After every meeting such as this, we review how the meeting went and we confirm among ourselves, with Jim and John, whether there are still additional pieces of information. And when we determine that there are, we go back and we ask for it.
So if you're, you know, my, has there been an independent environmental consultant hired by the board so far to review what the developer has submitted?
Other than CPL?
Yeah. CPL is an engineering firm, correct?
Well, it's an engineering firm with multiple disciplines within their firm. So they have traffic engineers, they have habitat assessors, they have...
They're a list of environmental...
Have they presented a report that we can review and understand?
They've submitted multiple reports.
Were they in the last two years?
I can't, we have to... There's been so much and there's so many applications that, that need to come in and look, or I'd have to look in the file and see when the last one was. I can't tell you.
Well, you know, we're really looking to the planning board to provide us with...
We provide, I, I believe Gretchen knows out of her way to provide everything that is received to the public.
Right. And, and there's no question, everyone in the town hall's always been wonderful and Gretchen's been very helpful, providing access to things. I guess my larger question is, we need to, and ask the planning board to look at the years and the scope of the reports and make sure that, given climate change and drought and flooding, that those reports are updated and you request that of whoever has submitted them, whether it's a consultant that the board has chosen or a consultant that the developer has. And make note of that publicly so that we can come in and make a copy and make sure that people see it. And have a public hearing before...
We are having a public hearing.
No, I mean, a public hearing, once we have that information. Because right now, we don't. And I think that in, in order for us, and we're trying to be very diligent and, you know, effective in reviewing everything, maybe we're asking questions and somewhere in the tome of documents, there are answers. But, you know, we all have jobs and families and we don't have the ability to go in and read every single thing. But there clearly are issues with respect to the dated sort of character of many of the reports. And again, you know, we, we really seek the board reviewing part two and part three in a manner that will ensure that if there's any doubt that there is a question and some of those questions we've raised and will continue to raise are in fact, you know, an independent consultant and expert, someone maybe not, you know, who's always used for these things, someone kind of new with, you know, no sort of historical, whatever. I think that would be, that would go a long way to creating what I'm sure you want, to have a, you know, sense of trust in the community that we're all working towards making sure that the best possible version of the development occurs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Barry.
Something new?
Uh, yes.
Oh, yes.
Always. So, so actually, one point of clarification on, on what Lynda said. So, um, we've seen CPL's questions to the, to Rockledge and WSP. And we know that the meetings continue when they, or... with it, or just that they feel that the report is thorough?
I can't speak, I...
Okay, okay.
I wouldn't answer for CPL.
Okay, okay. So we do, so like, okay, thank you.
I can only say that I find it to be very thorough, and if they have an issue, generally hear that they have an issue and may raise the question.
Oh, yeah, no, we've seen all their questions, so, and Rockledge's responses to their, to their questions, but sometimes they're pretty esoteric, and so like, some of the bigger issues that we've been questioning, we're not quite sure where CPL's come down on those things. So thank you for clarifying that. Just a couple of things. The cost of adaptive reuse. So one of the things we've heard repeatedly through this process is that the, it's the cost of the adaptive reuse project for restoring those buildings that is driving the need to have 28 new build units on Lot 3. So I think since the density is so pivotal for all of us, we think it would be reasonable to ask for a cost, an independent cost estimate of rehabilitating the historic buildings.
I don't believe, I have been told, or someone else would have to confess, but I don't believe that it is within the authority of the planning board to be asking for business plan, anything like that with that.
No, and the planning board decisions are not supposed to be made utilizing any financial considerations. Financial considerations, always going to cost this or cost that, shouldn't be the consideration of the board. The board's looking at this from a zoning land use perspective, or the housing cost perspective.
Okay. So if he picks up his toys and goes home because there's no margin in this project for him if he can't do 28 units, that's not your jam?
Can't make a decision based on that.
Okay, thank you very much. That's very helpful. Now additionally, there are the 23, I think it's 23 parking spaces provided, indicated by the dormitory building. We question why they need 23 parking spaces in the dormitory building that aren't convenient to the residents or their guests.
There's a question with the floor? What's another question?
I have, I have raised that, but I would like to emphasize that the, there is no hard standing there currently, so not only is it a very large number of parking spaces that would be a parking lot on Apric Hook Road, the size of CBS, that would be additional paved area. It also kind of raises the question what they expect to go on in that building, and while it's really none of our business, except I think we need, they need to be very clear that it's no possibility of future residential use in there, either accessory dwellings...
That is not part of the application.
I know, but in the future, they cannot decide to make that accessory dwellings to the units, just saying that's a possible combination, or as staff housing, or something like that. It cannot be used for residential uses, and I don't think it should be used for commercial uses either.
Those changes, should they ever be considered in the future, would require that in the planning?
I understand that, I understand that.
Well, it's all...
We only review the application in front of us. We can't guess what might happen in the future on any...
And were they to deviate from the approved site plan in the future and introduce any of those issues, they would be a lot of issues.
I'm not so much talking about the developers now, I'm talking about that development once it's established.
If there would be a future development, would that be...
It's a totally separate consideration, okay. So then, and second, and just lastly, from a personal standpoint, since we're directly opposite the property, can I also have a meeting with CPL or somebody about the stormwater? Because we already receive quite a lot of water off of that property, and I think I heard somebody say at the last meeting that the runoff might even get better, because currently there's a very poor infrastructure up there, so that would be really good. But I would really like to personally understand what to expect on our properties of their, of their stormwater plans. Also water, and also the noise and light at night for the water treatment plant, because that's like right across from our front porch. So those are my, thank you very much.
I just have one more quick question about what was just said. 23 parking spaces in front of the dormitories, which we've been told numerous times are for storage. I'm asking Rockledge on record here, what are those parking spaces for? You need a loading and unloading if it's only for storage. You don't need 23 parking spaces. I would think that would be a question you guys would be asking, but I don't know.
I understand that, well, if you have, if there are agricultural parcels near the Rockledge development, is approval from them required or sought by the planning board or the town board because of the desire to maintain, you know, the integrity of agricultural properties in Rockledge? Just the idea statement consent to them?
I can't hear you.
The idea statement consent to them, so that they're aware that if a project's going on within 500 foot radius of it.
Okay. Because Carol Lee owns the property that I now own, and I understand that maybe she received something, but it's been a few years sadly since she passed away, and I've never received anything. And the property that, what you just mentioned...
The idea statement...
It would have been just notification.
It would have been notified along with the referrals with the initial application, the initial public hearing.
So if there are ag operations within X number of feet, they would be notified along with any other surrounding neighbors.
And it's not just ag districts, it's only for the farms that are active farms within that 500 foot radius.
So it would have to be active, not simply the ability to in fact conduct farm activity?
Right. And it's almost like a public hearing notice in a way. It's just allowing that farm to know specifically that there is something going on.
The ag data statement also alerts an applicant or developer the fact that there is an agricultural operation nearby, and that they have to understand that that's there and it's going to be there. So if there are smells or other things that come from agricultural use that have been there, that's the way it is, and they fill out that statement stating, we know that there are fogs around here, and they understand we're within 500 feet of an agricultural use, and if those operations continue, those operations can continue. And it helps them to notice that that's, that's an agricultural...
Right. Does the, does the presence of agricultural land such as mine, which does, you know, the creek or whatever runs into eventually Fallsborough Creek goes right through my property and Kara's and other people's, does the fact that it is agricultural, it's an agricultural district that this land is in, does that affect, or does the board consider that in terms of the, what I think is estimated 14,000, you know, gallons per day of processed wastewater, and maybe there's a mix of storm and maybe block water in that, because of the need to maintain the integrity of the soils in the agricultural landscape?
The applicant and people reviewing it, would look at all of those things simultaneously?
I'd have to, I'd have to defer to CPL to be sure, but I believe the requirement is that the runoff water has to be the same post-development as it is pre-development. So there won't be any more runoff coming off of the site because of development for the runoff water itself. Now, the wastewater treatment is something different, obviously, that's a different discussion. And there should not be any mixing of the two. I mean, the biggest thing we're doing now in New York State is separating all of our storm servers, because we don't want that stormwater going in, having to be processed, going through the process, and then, you know, mixing in. It's just an additional, it's necessarily that stormwater that runs off should run off naturally into detention basins and other natural areas.
Right, right. But the processed wastewater would be going through what is currently, you know, designated as federal in New York wetlands, which is the stream that runs through our properties. And that's what the, that's where the 14,000 by the developer's zone estimate will be flowing out of every day.
And that would be reviewed by the DEC, because those types of issues go beyond the planning board.
Okay, so that's not a CPL issue?
Well, CPL's involved reviewing the data, but the DEC has to sign off on any permits or anything like that. And then beyond that, I'd defer to CPL.
Is it okay for us to send questions directly to CPL? Is that...
They go through the planning board's...
So, okay, so we'll submit them. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hi, Trish Purthoyes, 278 Apric Hook. I'm trying to wrap my head around the water treatment plant, because my understanding is it was old 20 years ago. It was, it's an old system, and here comes a big new development, and another understanding I have, which may or may not be correct, is if you make a big improvement to your property, so for example, if I built a guest cottage on my property, I'd have to get rid of my old septic tank and put in a new leach field and a state of the art septic system. So why is it that this project has an old facility for waste treatment that's not required to be upgraded and made state of New York, especially with the much, much higher use? It's one thing.
If I'm remembering correctly, I think that was largely the issue we raised last month. Is that correct around the sewage treatment plant?
Well, more or less. I mean, I'm more worried about the wastewater treatment than anything else, but, but it occurred to me that everyone else who does a big capital of, whether a big change on their property, has to also upgrade the septic system. And I'm not, not really seeing that this is being upgraded, maybe it is, but I'm not seeing that. So, and, oh, and the other thing that comes out of the meeting, at one point, someone was talking about the water treatment plant at Wells Manor, and mentioned that if you go down there by Wells Manor, it's going to smell, it's going to smell bad, so just want to point that out.
Okay. Thank you.
I really appreciate my public speaking skills. I did review the CPL report with the latest one that came in, in depth, and was specifically looking at it to get some answers to my questions about the wastewater treatment plant. And it really does not even address at all, to my knowledge, the wastewater treatment plant. So I'm curious if the planning board is depending solely on the New York State DEC evaluation of the wastewater treatment plant, and if it is, I want you to understand that the DEC does not regulate toxins being put in the water. It only regulates solids and disinfectant. So while they may get a speed is permit from the DEC, that doesn't say that their output from the wastewater treatment plant isn't going to seriously degrade our aquifer. So, so my first question, direct question is, is CPL going to look further into the wastewater treatment plant and make a report on maybe what needs to be done in addition to what might get them through DEC's speed is approval?
258 Apric Hook Road, wastewater treatment is of primary concern, as we hear from most everybody. There was mention that there was an underground, something underground that was rejected. So I'm wondering, do we have the information for why that was rejected, what were the grounds, was it too expensive, what was there? And are there other options besides this wastewater treatment plant or, you know, that haven't been considered? Have we explored all of those options, whatever is out there that's possible? I've got that stream coming through my property, I've had a flood multiple times on my property, a huge section of my property gets flooded when the, you know, too much water comes out. So it remains a great big concern, and we're hoping that you all look into all the options, whether it be, you know, transportation, all the... Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jeff Poten. I'm a new resident in the community, and I've only preliminarily, oh, by the way, I live in 15 Apric Hook Road. I've only preliminarily viewed the materials, so I have no ability to comment on the project at this point, but I did not see very much detail on the wastewater treatment system. And I'd like to bring to the attention of the planning board that there are a vast array of technologies that have been developed in the last 10 years for on-site wastewater management. I formerly was regional director of USDA Water Quality Program, and formerly with USPA, working also in wastewater. And there is a, there are cost-effective technologies for zero discharge and in fact complete blackwater recovery, so there would be no discharge. These technologies have been used on commercial developments. New York City, as was mentioned earlier, New York City DEP has implemented a number of these technologies in the watershed. Plus, there is a research institute at the University of Rhode Island that demonstrates innovative technologies, and it certainly does not have to be the bare minimum. There are opportunities that would be cost-effective for the developer to create a facility that would minimize any risk of the receiving waters in the wetlands.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie.
There are no more comments. I have to motion to adjourn until the 6:00 minute.
I'm sorry, I probably should have spoken when you first asked, but I, I just want to make it clear to everyone that I'm listening, and I, you know, it's good to hear new things come out, and it's good to hear your ideas, and your priorities absolutely do count to us, but that doesn't mean that we have to decide things, you know, in a particular way. So we're listening, and we understand that you're not just shouting out a loud. I mean, it's, what you say is meaningful and impactful, so thank you for coming up and speaking.
I think Craig speaks for everybody sitting around this table. Like you, we are immensely interested in seeing this project, if I'm correctly. I hope you understand that when we do questions aways, we don't just like the live album, but it's not our job sitting here tonight. Our job sitting here tonight is to hear you and to listen to you. We're not going to get into a dialogue with you. It really is up to the applicant and the applicant's consultant to, it's their project. They have to answer your questions. We would be remiss if we were trying to answer for them, and I never want to be in the position of answering a question for an applicant, because I might get it wrong, and I would be giving you incorrect information, and I don't want to mislead you, and I don't think anybody here wants to mislead you. So when you think we're maybe not asking questions, maybe we are. When you think we're not following up, we certainly are. I can't begin to tell you the number of hours many of us have spent following up on details regarding this application, pursuing answers to questions we're raising, but are not, we have no preconceived decisions about where this project's going. We are trying to responsibly hear you, listen, pursue. I can't force people to give me answers, I can only keep asking questions. And that is part of the reason these public hearings continue, in a good faith attempt to get every possible question asked answered. So all we can do is assure you that we, as Craig said, hear you, we're doing the very best we can to respond, and we'll continue to do that. So thank you for your attention, thank you for your courtesy. We'll see you in two months, if I can only get a motion.
Do that first. Do that first.
Move to adjourn.
No, I'm moving to continue the...
I'll move to continue the public hearing to...
May 6.
May 6.
May 6, perfect.
Uh, 6. 6. So, I have a motion to the office secretary, follow us in favor of that. Those extensions, we have one last.
Before everybody leaves, I'm just going to say, the applicants are not here tonight. If you have questions and you can shoot a quick email so I can send that on to them, there's no guarantee they're going to watch the video. I'm sure they do, but there's no guarantee. So, if you ever have anything that you really want to make sure that gets sent to them, just send me an email. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we have one last order of business. So, if you all could chit chat, please take your chitty chatty outside so we can include reference of these for the, for the, this to join the board. Trish, can you close that door anyway?
The last caller for this evening is a referral from the CBA for a new sign for Fernburg Arch Care and not hurt the forest, making sure the girl... They need a variance to essentially replace their sign. Sign proposed is double-sided, 9.56 square feet per side to 19.12 square feet. It's over the maximum limit because we know the sign put is very strict for like us to use. So, they are in front of the CBA, this is the CBA application. Everyone knows what Fernburg is, I don't think they know about that. Side location is right ahead at the corner of the intersection, if you can picture it. That's the existing sign today. It stands behind the rock wall. And what they want to do is replace it in kind. With the new sign, we'll go from, from wood sign to, it's aluminum, graphics painted on it, replacing the existing sign essentially in kind. And the following thoughts, we took a look at this. It may be worthwhile responding to CBA to confirm that there is no other sign proposed for this location. We know a daycare is going in there. I just would like to make sure we don't come back and see another sign application or is going to be a referral in a month or two. That's going to be the daycare on us. If that's something that, I just think we didn't confirm. This is all that we're going to put there. There was never, I forget that, but I remember in the application review, I just think that we could ask the question, clarify this is it? That's all they submit.
Where's, where's the daycare in there? Approval, are they reaching the end of the suspension or anything? So, they do sign it. No? They do sign the daycare. All right, so they just have, and they pull the...
I don't know.
Just read in kind.
They're going to replace this one in the same spot that the other one is.
Is it the same size or...?
Yeah, probably the same size. But the one that exists now is too large, it's in the commercial standards and pretty scary, especially in residential area. I do think it will look bigger. As you can see, this one has cutouts in it, someone's going to get full square. So, it will have more of a visual appearance to it fully red as opposed to the white one. So, you'll see it, I think, more than what's there today. Again, just really the recommendations, just consider the, you know, the context of the area. It is an intentionally residential district, kind of on a country road. Nor a road, much use is out there, as you know, this is the case, even what's there. And the only other thought we had is just to ask the CBA to confirm if that was in the county right of way. I don't think it is, it's behind the stone wall. I can't imagine that's an issue, but maybe just ask them to confirm that to make them think it's a road. We just want to make that confirmation. I don't think the county's going to come and widen the road and run that.
Easy plan.
Right, yeah, so, so it shouldn't be an issue. What's that? Yeah.
I mean, one was four feet to the top or something. Three and a half.
This is the kind of silhouette of a person here, so seven inches.
I'm wondering if it looks a tad bit lower to the ground. That would not be so, they had face.
It doesn't work when you put this trap pad on the front. It's way shorter.
It's, it's a little, maybe a little shorter.
Yeah, it looks like, yeah, I mean. It's tough to tell.
Might be, at the arch might be the same, I don't know.
Yeah, probably. The sign you can sort of, sometimes you can reference, sometimes you can't, it depends. But it's also, you know, it's probably...
There's also situations in the past, like we asked them to consider some like space under below it to soften the sort of partial...
You know, like it's the other side, it just looks scary.
Tall, like the guy.
Yeah. The other one too makes sense.
It looks more utilitarian than the original.
It is, and it is, it is going to stand, I think it will actually stand out more than the second one. It's, it's red, the other one's mostly white, it will pop everywhere, I think it's fair to say.
The other side, wait.
I know that way off. The other, the other side seems very disblinding. I noticed it every time I drive by. So, why are they, why do they need a new sign?
That one apparently is rotting and they want to replace it.
They don't want the same, same one.
They don't want to have to maintain it. They put in a letter that the, 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 it needs to be maintained.
I, I like them to consider one way a little bit. It can be quite so in your face, a little shorter.
Who's a more like how it care?
And to James' point, confirming that, well, in the county, that it's not going to grow with the daycare, that this is it. Otherwise, it might have to be modified in advance.
Yeah, so my, my referral recommendation is that the variance is the race of planning or by amount of concerns. However, they should confirm there's no additional signage to be put on there particularly related to daycare. Confirm that it's outside the county right of way, which I'm pretty sure it isn't an issue. Confirm the sign will be placed in the same location because they did really advise, and they did provide this mess, which they said in the letter, just confirm that and then consider lowering it.
Go to the...
Anything else, someone review those comments?
Are you in motion, please? For who? Second.
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 Hi.
Bye.
I'm always on paper. Hi.
Bye. So...
Six.
Bye.
Bye.